First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody. I appreciate your coming out in the evening and showing your interest in your community and for this informative event that we have here. Before I start, I'd like to introduce a few people so everybody knows who's in the audience. First of all, I think we have two commissioners, if you would stand, Brian Freshman, District Two, and then District Five, Bruce Holmes.
I didn't know we had it by peanut gallery or something here, okay? In no other order, I just, the contingent here is pretty big, so I'm gonna take the City of Hampton, Mayor Coley, Councilperson Willie Walls, Charlie Hearn, Marty Meeks, and Henry Berg, if you'll all stand up, let everybody see that you have. From the City of Locust Grove, we have Mayor Robert Price, and Tim Young is the city manager, acting, whatever, what title did you get stuck with? You want to be a deputy or something? I got rid of that title. And in the City of Hampton, we have with us tonight Andy Pippen, who's the county manager, or city manager, excuse me. Stand up back there. In Stockbridge, we have the city administrator, Ray Gibson. And did I miss any elected officials?
He's with us.
I didn't see him. Anyways, I guess if we get any, oh, there he is. And making a grand entrance, representing City of Stockbridge. And drum roll, please, Mayor Stewart. Some people do anything for a little bit of applause, I tell you. Anyways, like I said, I'm not gonna stand up here and speak. I'm gonna turn this over, as I said, this main thing is to welcome you here, appreciate your coming out. Should be a very informative program, participation on your parts, asking your questions, any comments, and I'm gonna turn it over now to our Director of Planning and Development Division, Michael Harris.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out, you know, on a Thursday night, in the middle of a week. We certainly appreciate everyone taking the time out to come and invest your time in what is a critically important initiative for this community. It's great to see so many people that are able to come out, a lot of familiar faces, folks we've had opportunity to work with throughout the community, so, again, just want to thank you for taking the time out and taking this investment into the community that you've made. This time, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Bill Wazlinski and Mr. Whitney Finstrom, our consultants that have helped us, that are walking us through this process. As many of you may know, those of you who may not, this is our first, our inaugural venture into Community Development Block Grant Program, as we just recently became eligible for the entitlement funding when we met the, when we crested to 200,000 population with the 2010 census. Very excited, it's very new for us, so, again, we're, we, from a staff standpoint, like you here in the community, we're coming just eyes wide open, trying to find out all the opportunities that we have. And, you know, again, the main emphasis tonight is finding out and hearing about what, you know, what you feel are some of the relevant and pressing needs within our community. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bill, and he's gonna kind of walk you through the agenda and kind of what steps we're gonna be taking this evening. Thank you again.
Thank you, Michael. And again, welcome, everyone. My name is Bill Wazlinski, and my colleague, Whitney Finstrom, we represent a firm called Mullen and Launergan Associates, and we're based in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, actually. And we actually do a lot of these across the country, so we feel very welcome and privileged to be in your community and carrying out this very important planning initiative. I just wanted to give you, before we get into the program today, I just wanted to give you a background on the agenda issues that we're gonna be doing tonight, a little bit about some housekeeping issues, how we're gonna move forward, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Whitney for a brief PowerPoint on the CDBG program, on what's eligible, what's not eligible, those kind of good things. So, to begin with, we've been in your community since Tuesday morning, and we met with a lot of different stakeholders. We've had stakeholder meetings back-to-back since probably Tuesday afternoon, after lunch we started. Yesterday was packed, today was packed. I recognize a lot of the faces in the room, and thank you for coming back out tonight. I understand it's, again, a commitment to come to meetings, stakeholder meetings, and come to public hearings in the evening, but it's all critical and important, it's part of getting a sense of what the real needs are in the community as we move forward and prepare the five-year consolidated plan. So, with that said, tonight, what we're gonna do is a couple of things. As I said, we're going to walk through a quick, brief PowerPoint. I know PowerPoints can get boring, and everyone does them, but I think it's valid, becoming a new HUD entitlement community, to kind of just walk through some what's eligible, what's not eligible, what the program allows, what it doesn't allow, and just so everyone kind of gets a sense of what's, what can be, these funds can be used for. Then, what we're gonna do is move into what the real purpose of this, this evening is about, and that's to open it up for public comment from you all, and it's really important that we listen closely to the needs that you're gonna come up to, to talk about, because we want to really capture what the needs are within the community. And the way that we're gonna do that is, it is a public hearing, so, once we wrap up this thing, this PowerPoint, we're gonna transition to the public hearing portion. And what we would ask is that, if you're going to provide a comment, we're gonna take really good notes, we're gonna listen, be good listeners, and so we capture everything as part of what's stated here this evening. And then, we're gonna ask people to come up to the microphone, if they can, and speak into the microphone clearly, so we can hear everyone, and everyone else can hear what's being said. If you can't, for a physical reason, disability reason, we do have the ability to get you a microphone, you just left it, let us know, but it's important that you come up to the speaker and, and form those, those needs. We also are gonna ask that, we have a two-minute timer on there, that we ask that you keep your comments and your needs to, within two minutes, so that everyone has the ability to speak, and has a given a chance to speak. And that's basically the groundwork. Did I forget anything, Michael?
Just one thing quickly to add. We, yeah, I need a microphone, don't I? Just want to let everyone know that tonight's meeting is being televised. We're doing all we can to make sure we capture as much information as we can, and lets many people within the community, give them the opportunity to kind of view and see, you know, what's being spoken, what's being discussed here this evening. So, again, it is being, it is being televised, and we'll also, for the first time again, I want to thank Julie Hoover Ernst, our Communications Director, for allowing the ability for people to actually use Twitter or email to send, submit questions in, so as we get those questions, Julie will be kind of notifying our consultants, so maybe asking, addressing some of those questions tonight as well. So, again, just want to let, notify everyone, let them know, I think that's the main thing.
Okay, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Whitney to walk us through the PowerPoint, and then I'll be back after the PowerPoint to kick off the public needs portion. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. As Bill said, this is gonna be quick, so don't blink, pay attention carefully to the screen. We do want to just give you a quick overview, and this also may provide some answers to questions you may have already. So, no further ado. Why are we doing this? What is a five-year consolidated plan? Well, this is required by HUD as part of the process of receiving community development block grant funds, and it's a five-year plan, and it is for the period from July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, June 30th, 2016. And, as has been mentioned, we've met with a number of folks who are in the room today, and we've been fortunate to get to know the county and all the issues within the county, at least some of them. We've met stakeholders who are involved in affordable housing issues, social services, public transportation, economic development, workforce development, you name it, it's been a broad cross-section. What we're gonna do is take that information back and develop the five-year plan. We're gonna do an interim report, we're gonna provide to the commissioners and the staff in terms of the things that we've heard, the key issues and some of the priorities. And then, of course, with the commissioners and the staff working on, will work on, you know, which projects and what activities to carry out. But a component of a five-year consolidated data plan is also a market study we do, it's almost like a housing market study. And, no surprise, it's probably gonna tell us that there was tremendous growth from 2000 to 2010, so it'll probably just kind of verify some things that we already have a sense of. And as I mentioned, the local priorities, there are sort of two parts to this, there's a five-year consolidated plan, which will set the framework for the next five years, but there's also a specific 2012 annual plan. And so we're doing both simultaneously, and then the following year, there's a 2013 plan, and a 2014, and 2015, and 2016. So every five years is a five-year plan, and then every following year, within that five-year timeframe, there are specific activities. So I think the point I want to make is that, even though there may not be a project or activity funded in the first year, that doesn't mean it's not funded in the second or third years, subsequent years. But those do need to be identified in the five-year plan, so there's a critical component. This is just kind of an overview in terms of the CDBG eligible activities, it's not completely comprehensive, but it does go into some of the activities that typically qualify, and that communities typically pick, and they can be anything from code enforcement to blight removal, economic development, as you can see, then housing rehab, homeownership assistance. But, of course, like any federal program, there are specific requirements, and there are some limitations. It's a flexible program, but there are some federal guidelines. This just gives you an overview about the public services that can qualify, and just kind of a sample. Drug abuse, education, fair housing, childcare, these are just an example. We always want to know about, well, what's not eligible? And of course, political activities are not eligible, no purchase of equipment, there are actually some variables to that, but anyway, no direct income payments, and so on, so these are the no-no's with CDBG. As I said earlier, there are, it's a federal program, so there are federal requirements, and they must meet a national objective, and there are sort of three key national objectives. One is that it has to qualify, the area has to be a low mod income area, as established by HUD. Boring with all the details, but for Henry County, the guideline is about 44.59% of an area has to be low mod income. In other words, 45.59% or higher folks, if they qualify that area, then the area is a low mod area. There's another criteria, which is area benefit, which means that if it's not within those low mod areas, let's say it's outside of that, it's a higher income area, but program could qualify, let's say, it could be a van which takes seniors from their homes to a senior center, that could be one. Another area of qualification is a, if there's a natural disaster, a hurricane or tornado, but that's unusual, but that can be used for CDBG funds. More national objectives, I won't go into all those. Just a quick overview of this, this is also established by HUD, these are the definition of a low and moderate income by family size. So, again, established by HUD, these are 80% of area median income, and they vary from 38, 850 for one person, on up, scales on up, and this is adjusted every year. Henry County has about $850,000 anticipated for CDBG funds for 2012, and that can change year to year, you know, it depends on what's happening to the federal government, Congress makes that decision, so there have been major cuts over the last couple of years for other communities that have already received CDBG funds. But anyway, we know for 2012, it's, it's 850,000, and up to 20% of that amount can be used for administration costs for the program. And of course, public input and involvement is key to this process, and thus, we're glad to have you here tonight, and also, we have the Twitter feed and broadcast on TV. And, I won't go over the rest of that, but let me just quickly go over the schedule. So, we have a fairly aggressive schedule for this process, of course, we've been here this week, we're gonna go back, put together all the information, all the great stuff we've heard, send that to the staff and to the commissioners, and we have to create a document that will go on display by May 1st, and that'll be on display for 30 days, from May 1st to June 1st. And that'll probably be on your website as well, we want to make sure it's as accessible and available as possible, so people can read through it, they have the opportunity to provide feedback, those are all critical components. And then, the governing body will ideally approve it by mid-June, and then it goes to HUD for a 45-day review, ideally, they say, "Great, good stuff, make it happen." And then, August 1st is when the county should ideally be receiving its CDBG allocation. The qualification there is that it's a July 1st year, the county got an extension due to just some changes in the fact it's a new program, so generally, it'll be, it'll be July 1st, but this year, it's August 1st. Thank you. So we're, we're gonna just, that's a quick overview, I hope you're paying attention. And we're more than happy to answer any questions at some point, but we do want to listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Whitney. Before we start, we want to take a little break and ask if there's any questions of folks in terms of the process that's been carried out, the stakeholder interviews that we've done, the schedule, any specific CDBG eligibility questions, how the program works, we want to do that up front, so that everyone's on board. Is there any questions related to that? Yes? What is not eligible?
Let me take it back, okay.
So, basically, no political activities, no construction of housing, you can do rehabilitation of housing, but you cannot construct new housing with CDBG funds. You cannot use it for the operation and maintenance of public facilities or improvements. You cannot use it for general government expenses, including construction of general government buildings, which you don't need, you have a beautiful facility right here. No purchase of equipment, and no direct income payments. So it's very, very prescribed, which you cannot do with these funds. Yes?
In regards to the stakeholder meetings that you guys conducted today, what priorities came out of those meetings?
We can give you a brief overview of some of the things we've heard. Specifically, the number-one thing that we've heard, a couple of things we've heard. The first one was the impact that the economic crisis over the last couple of years has had on the homeless folks of this community. Homeless, two shelters in the county have been overwhelmed recently. We heard stories of folks not being able to find a bed, shelter for families, and for women of domestic violence. We heard stories of folks living in hotels part of a month, and then, the rest of a month, they're living in their cars with their family in the parking lot of a hotel, motel. We heard the impact of the foreclosure crisis, specifically in the Stockbridge area, there's a significant, high number of foreclosed properties. We've heard a priority need of housing rehabilitation in all its forms, not just a general rehab program, but a need for emergency rehab, so if a person's house, the roof has got blown off, doesn't have a roof, or has immediate need inside the house to improve it, there's a significant increase in the need for that over the last four or five years.
Handicap accessibility.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, weatherization, so doors, windows, roofs, housing rehab, and then physical disabilities, persons with physical disabilities. One of the things we've heard time and time again is the fact that a lot of the foreclosure issues are impacting a lot of different people, in that their homes are getting foreclosed, specifically among the older population, they're having to move in with the younger, with their adult children, that sometimes requires accessible, accessibility improvements to their home. We heard about public facilities in the county do not have elevators or lists for handicap-accessible We heard significant, I was getting, there's two other ones I was gonna talk about, the need for elderly, senior center, and then ultimately, we heard a really detailed, and a number of different times, the need for early Head Start. There's a Head Start building, or Head Start program in the county, that only addresses ages three and above, there's a real need for zero to three, and specifically, the need for a physical building for, to house that, those programs, is a real need within the county. The food pantries are also increasingly seeing demand for services and help. That's all, all this social service stuff that we heard is being exacerbated by the fact that you had a very vibrant local banking community here, except through the economic crisis, you've lost, I believe that the number was five, local banks, and they used to provide, almost as foundation community dollars, to help the social service communities, nonprofits, shelters. That's, funding has gone away, state funding has decreased or gone away, all that is just exacerbating the problem locally.
What's, what's the priority there?
Unfortunately, that's not our call. Our call, our call is to lay out what we've heard here. Our job is to work with the staff and with, with the commissioners on identifying eligible activities that meet high priority needs within the community. It's really, I can't stress this enough, it's really important, the first year of your program year, to make an impression, a good impression with HUD, to do projects that are, what you, your term you use, low-hanging fruit. There's projects out there that we heard throughout the county that would be no-brainers if, if I had the decision to make. There's also projects that are ready maybe in two or three years, and keep in mind, you're gonna get dollars every year continuously for now on. So the idea is to make a good impression, find projects that you can expend dollars elegibly and quickly, and on projects that meet high priority needs, that's the, that's the best advice I can provide to everyone in the room here, because it is critical that you do that, and you do not fall behind on the timely side of life. HUD wants you to spend the dollars, they don't want you to sit on the dollar, and that's a critical piece, because HUD starts taking away money if you're not spending it.
Okay, Commissioner, we could just, maybe it'd be a good time to transition on.
Sure, okay.
We're gonna make sure we capture all of everyone's questions.
We're gonna transition up to there, and then, and then, any, after that, if you guys could come up for needs.
In terms of the low mod areas, we had a discussion regarding opportunity zones yesterday. Will those same areas that were identified in McDonough, Stockbridge, and I think Hampton, will those be the same areas that would have to qualify for the CDBG funds?
It's similar, the, what's used to determine the opportunity zones, that's typically generated through census data, a lot of the low to mod information that's generated, is generated through the HUD department. So the demographic, or the statistics that are used to generate the low to mod areas, slightly different than what's used to generate the opportunity zones, but similar, I mean, certainly, what comes out of that is very similar. So, we're still looking at, we're still trying to refine and define exactly where those are, areas will be, but that's part of this process, is identifying where some of those low to mod areas are throughout the community, and they, you know, in early, early part of our steps, identified some of those areas, there's some areas that are slightly just below those thresholds, and looking at, you know, what can be done to still include those within the process as well.
Will we be looking at areas that have more of a, you know, a wider low to mod track versus other areas? Will those areas be more, will they, will they be priority, I guess, that's what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that point yet, and we're, right now, we're still in the process of kind of identifying where those low to mod areas are throughout the community, and so trying to isolate, find out where those areas are, and once we, as we do, then we'll continue to kind of look at how far we can broaden our, broaden our reach, if you will.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep. At this time, we're, as we have transitioned up to the, to the front, what I would like to ask is that, if you have questions, again, as I stated before, we are being, we're televising our, this program, if you can please come to the microphone to ask your questions, we'll try to limit it to two minutes, and just, again, please just come to the microphone, if you're unable to come to the microphone, let us know, we'll make sure we get a microphone to you. I'd like to ask Sheriff, if you can just kind of read in a quick statement concerning the websites.
Good evening. For our viewing public, if you are watching from home tonight and want to make a comment, you can tweet us at HenryCounty using hashtag HCGrant, or email hcggrant@co.henry.gas.us. And for the individuals here tonight, I just want to remind you that if you have not already done so, please be sure to sign in on the sign-in sheets that are located out in the vestibule. Thank you.
Please come on up.
My name is Arlie Low, I'm from the City of Hampton. As we're all aware, senior centers are an eligible item under CDBG funds administered from HUD through DCA, and the DCA through HUD recognizes that people who participate in senior center activities are automatically considered and counted as LMI individuals, low to moderate income. I think it's significant to note that Henry County as a whole has 10.5% below the poverty level, that's the county, unincorporated county as a whole. The City of McDonough is 12.8% below poverty level, City of Stockbridge is 10.9% below poverty level, the City of Locust Grove is 11% below poverty level, City of Hampton is 19.7% below the poverty level through the 2010 census. We are on the west side of I-75. Every other facility that the county has provided to help our senior citizens is on the east side of I-75. All of those areas have a much, much lower poverty level than the part that is on the west side of I-75. We've been denied this particular facility for several years, the money was there, it was taken away, it magically reappeared for one of the other districts, but the west side of I-75 has still been ignored in 34 seconds. The City of Hampton, District Two, is the only part of Henry County that has census tracks that are at a 20% or below poverty level. There are three others in the county that are 15%, there are no others in the county that are 20%. The feeling is, is that probably by next year, HUD will only recognize 20% or below, which in which case, will only include Hampton and that part of District Two that has the census tracks that are below 20%. So I ask that you keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Melissa Chapman, and I'm the CEO of Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity. I'm joined this evening by members of my amazing team, my visionary board, and our respected colleague from Habitat International. As part of Henry County's intention to gather feedback and public input on its use of CDBG funding, I'm privileged to share with you Southern Crescent, Southern Crescent Habitat's support of this funding. It is clear that the primary statutory objective of the CDBG program is to develop viable communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities for all constituents, including those of low and moderate income. This objective aligns squarely with Habitat's vision and mission, a world, of a world where everyone has a decent place to live, and our endeavor to put God's love into action by bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. This is certainly a time of shifting demands for our county, demands that include providing services, responding to changing environments, and navigating through mounting financial pressures. There is no doubt the skills of our county leaders are being put to the test. However, this test can push us to develop better growth strategies for our cities and towns. CDBG funding will provide Henry County with the resources to encourage government partnerships that deliver services more efficiently, help municipalities use infrastructure more effectively, and foster investments in sensible initiatives that improve the quality of life for those living and working in our community. Specifically, Southern Crescent Habitat views this funding as a vital resource that will allow us to bridge public and private funds to serve the intended population, the low and moderate income families. Our organization has a strong reputation of leveraging this funding to further our work to build and rehab homes near regional employment centers, acquire land for future development, and offer education opportunities to the broader community. Tonight, we stand as an advocate of this kind of responsible public investment, investment that serves as an economic force multiplier, and offers organizations like ours the resources to fulfill our mission of serving and changing lives of families in Henry County for generations to come. Together and collectively, I believe we can make a difference in our community. Thank you.
My name's Ed Hendry, I live in the City of Hampton, and there's some words that I'd like for you to write down and remember, it was kind of... It was kind of a trailer on to what the first speaker had to say. There is a world in Henry County west of I-75. It's been forgotten for many, many years. If you look at the county, it's been developed on the east side. The water authority is about the only thing that's on the west side of 75. Every Labor Day, they realize the west side, because Atlanta Motor Speedway has a big race, and then it's, it's a big attraction for the county and to draw in, but after that, it's tended to be forgotten about. Until they had I-20, it was even hard to get over there, the Highway 20. And, and just, if nothing else, if you get out of this, two of the commissioners are here, and I want them to hear it, and remember it, and the chairman, is there is a world in Henry County on the west side of I-75, and it is in bad need of a lot of things, and they need to quit forgetting about us. Thank you.
Well, hello everyone. My name is Ruth Rucker, and I'm the Executive Director for Hands of Hope Clinic. Hands of Hope, for those of you who might not know, is a free medical clinic that serves residents of Henry County who are without health insurance and lower income. We are a charitable 501(c)(3) clinic, we're based on Christian principles, started in a church, and we're run primarily by volunteers. But I just want to speak to the fact tonight that there is a very major issue in our county with lack of access to affordable healthcare for the population that we are attempting to serve. This problem has gotten worse, just in the last few years, we just notice the volume of phone calls that we get from desperate individuals seeking services is just gone sky high. It really is very difficult to manage our phone volume. And we have to turn away far more people than we're able to help in our, in our little free clinic. We are the only type service like this in Henry County. Folks who, who cannot get the care that they need on an outpatient basis end up in the hospital emergency rooms, end up with exacerbation of their medical conditions, hospitalized, their quality of life is poor, and it affects the whole community. Recently, the Henry Medical Center conducted their community needs assessment, and they identified access, lack of access to care in this county as the number two health issue affecting our residents. So, I'm here to speak on behalf of this particular issue and our clinic. We're certainly in need of support, we don't have dependable. We raise our money every year for the next year, we don't get government funding, we rely on grants and, and local donations, and, and with, with more support, we would be able to definitely help more of those in need in Henry County. Thank you.
I'm Janet Turner, and I'm the founder of Hands of Hope Clinic, and I want to echo what Ruth just had to say. Desperately, many desperate people need the clinic, and we have to turn them away. We need funds to keep the doors open. I also represent, I'm an advocate for the poor of this community, and I have a personal food ministry with St. Vincent de Paul. It's a door-to-door ministry where I go to the door, because these people don't even have transportation to go to food clinic, food places to pick up their food. A lot of the people that I serve can't read or write. Some of them hardly have roofs over their heads. They're very poor. I had one parent who had a child that was, had a heart condition, and he was very small. And she tried to help him with his homework from school. She didn't know how to read well enough to read his homework to help him, and she called me almost every night to see what she had to do to help her child with the homework. If we could have early Head Start in this county, we could at least chop a lot of the problems away if these kids got a great education and continued through high school and graduated. A lot of the problems that we have now would be smaller. I also, today, picked up an envelope from the welfare office, because this guy could not read what they had to say to him. There are so many that are needy in this county. The homeless, the people that need housing, people that need food, and people that need medical care. Please take in consideration all of those people.
Good afternoon. My name is Mildred Schmelz, and I'm here asking for funds to be used for the renovation, purchase, or to build facilities in Henry County for a program to be called the Henry County Parents Centers, where we can build early Head Start programs in each of the major population areas of Henry County. And this is to include Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton, and Fairview. Early Head Start serves children and their families from birth to three. Numerous studies have validated its effectiveness. This is what we need in Henry County. Pre-K for four-year-olds is too late. Head Start, available since 1965, is limited in Henry County to one program in Locust Grove, and they serve approximately 50 children in 2011. Only 13 were enrolled in Henry County Early Head Start. Clayton County served 350 children this year. Infants and toddlers who live in safe nurturing environments have positive verbal interaction with adults. I am also here to ask for funds for a program called Reach Out and Read. This is a program that's been started by a group of women here in Henry County in collaboration with some pediatricians in Henry, and we're asking for startup funds for this, this group. It's identify, it would identify children who are most at risk, and it would refer them to visiting nurses who would be covered by Peach Care. And this would be the first step in guiding parents in learning about good nutrition and healthcare for our children at risk. Dr. Kathy Maur has, is one of the first pediatricians in the country to start this program. Tax dollars spent on early learning is money that is well spent, and I'm asking you for funding for these two programs. Thank you.
I have an item, I'm sorry, my name is Tina Block. I'm a parent, concerned with the local park that we utilize, and a lot of families utilize. I've been asked to represent them. I know our county has a lot of very large needs, this is a smaller need, but I feel that it does fit within the scope of the program. It's specifically at Avalon Park. Right now, there is a park and ride, which is very utilized, there is a play area, and there's a skating park. It is being serviced by porta potties right now, which, for one thing, being right next to the playground is an issue. Another thing, they're not accessible whatsoever, they're in a grassy area, children on skates, it's unsafe and everything, but, and they've been there for at least four years, as long as I've been part of the program. It is a need that I feel would be a public facility improvement. It would be new, it's not something that we're maintaining, so I feel that it does fit within the realm of eligible items, and also the potential economic revenue benefits it could be. The park itself could host different events, where I know our group attends events at Snellville, Peachtree City, things that could be hosted by our area, bringing money into the area if we had the proper facilities. But that's just an item that I'd ask to be considered for Avalon Park. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Palmer. I'm here to ask for some of the funds for the Head Start in my community, in the surrounding communities. In reading in, in the local paper, and, and seeing where our students are academically, in these homes, the, the children are coming from, from birth to three years old, we have recently saw in the newspaper, it was even stated by the Henry County Board of Education, that over the years, and over time, people didn't expect much for some of the students, and that they only set the standard, and children were left behind. And it says here, if you set the high standards, you can achieve high standards. And if we don't reach out to these children in these homes from birth to three, we're still continuing on leaving them behind, and we need to do that in getting these funds and raising it up, so they won't be left. You know, we want, we want them to go to college, we want to raise it up, and I think that we can see an improvement by having the funds for the Head Start. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who could speak?
Somebody come in the door. Dr. Kathy Maur.
Okay. While she's making her way, is anyone else who'd like to speak and add their input? You're, you're right on time. No pressure.
Good evening. I didn't do anything. Well, I'm, what do you want to know?
Guys just came walking in, what we're asking, everyone just provide input on programs that they feel are beneficial for the community, and areas that you feel that would be useful for the community as far as where some of the needs may be for the, from the community's standpoint, your particular program you'd like to talk about, certainly welcome to hear your, your ideas.
Great, thank you. How much time do I have? Two minutes? Okay. Good evening, I'm Kathy Maur, I'm a community pediatrician, and thank you for my two minutes, and I try to put that two minutes into work as much as possible. What I would like to see in terms of the program or priority that we put in our county, or in the place that we're living, is that the importance of early education and early literacy. The problem is that a third of our kindergarten children come to school without the basic knowledge to, to be able to read and learn, and a third of these children who are not ready, even if they have remedial classes, they, by the fourth grade, they still fail. So, these kids who, who fail in the kindergarten area, and then also end up failing later on in school without interest in school, and the, the problem is that by the time they get into kindergarten, they do not have the basic knowledge to be able to succeed in school. And the, in terms of the biological reason for this is that the first three years of life is when the brain actually develops, okay? So, this is a critical period in a child's life wherein stimulation of the brain is very critical for brain growth and development. By the time this child is three years old, the brain has already grown 80%. And so, if you want to put your money into better use, that, then it's important to put that into early childhood education and early literacy. I'm actually, you know, if I, if I may, you know, do so to, we've started a program too in my clinic, wherein, it's called the Reach Out and Read Program, that we are encouraging our parents to read aloud to their babies, and, and so, this is, the message is that reading is doctor prescribed, it's very important for your child's brain development, it's very important for your child's early literacy education, so that if your child is in an environment that, when they are exposed to, to, to reading, to early literacy, then the more that they succeed in school. And so, and, you know, education is very important. If you look at where the United States is in terms of the global comparison there, we are very bad in reading, we are very bad in, in mathematics, and there's no excuse for this, because we are, you know, the number one, we are the richest country in the world. So, I think it's very important to put back our focus on, you know, our children and, and education, and early child education, you know, itself. Can I go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Floyd, and I'm with the Council on Aging, but I also live west of 75. I live in Hampton, Georgia. And in Hampton, Georgia, we don't have a senior center, as we've addressed already. But the problem with that is that our buses to get us over to the senior center takes quite a while. Most of our seniors aren't going to get on a bus and ride half the day to go to the senior center. As we just discussed, we have 20% poverty level, so most of those people don't have cars, and probably wouldn't have the money for the gas if they did have the car. So, we have a, a great need for our seniors to be able to get out and interact, those that are able and aren't homebound, to come and socialize, because that has been known to keep people healthy, keep them out of the nursing homes that cost so very much to house, keep them happier, because if they're at home, they can be happier in their community. So, we really stress that we receive some money to have a senior center in Hampton, Georgia. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Vincent, and I'm not here in an official capacity on this evening, I've already clearly articulated what the city of McDonough's concerns are, but I've had a number of citizens that have contacted me relative to a point that I continuously hear echoed here on this evening, and it is the issue of...
Who is yours?
Good evening. I came in a little late, so I don't know what all has been said, but I'm just a concerned citizen who lives in Henry County, and I just want, and I read about it on the website, so I just wanted to voice my concerns about the youth as well. I think some of this funding should go to some program for the youth, because the youth are having a terrible time. They have nothing to do, they have nowhere to go, so we need to invest in something for them to do after school, and something that will also involve education with them, something like maybe a tutoring and arts program for after school, somewhere where they can go and not, and hang out, not have to hang out in the neighborhoods. Excuse me, I'm really nervous. This is my first time publicly speaking, but I wanted to express that we really need to focus on our youth, because I work for Clayton County Juvenile Court, and I'm seeing these kids come through too much, and I don't want that to happen here in Henry County as well. So, we need something, some of this money to go towards some programs for our youth in the afternoons. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Holliday. I am a resident of Stockbridge, Georgia, and I support using the CDBG grants funds for the early childhood education as well. I am going to quote Mr. Rob Dugger, the Managing Director of the Tutor Investment Corporation. Mr. Dugger spoke out at a conference for a greater public contribution, stating that the resulting improvement in business and social climates would benefit everyone. He stated, "We are condemning ourselves to a future of slow economic growth and high crime by not attending to what has been well-known. There are huge fiscal implications to not having enough ready-for-school children. The spending priorities of this country need to take the life success of every child the highest priority."
Charlie Hearn, Hampton, Georgia. I would just like to say that I would, you know, I didn't come here to plan on saying anything, but listening to all these other people talking about the different programs and stuff, I would like to say that I wish there was some kind of a program that we had in the county that our parents need to step up to the plate and help with some of this early education stuff, because my daughter is a schoolteacher, my wife is a parapro, and there is no participation with the parents in helping their children when they get to kindergarten. A lot of them, like you said, don't know how to read, a lot of them don't know how to do anything, and, you know, I don't know if there's a program out there, but, you know, I would like to see a lot more participation with our parents, and our parents stepping up to the plate and being somewhat responsible for helping get their children ready for school, and not everybody depend on a program, a social program, or another group of people out there to do it for them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Holliday. I am a resident of Stockbridge, Georgia, and I support using the CDBG grants funds for the early childhood education as well. I am going to quote Mr. Rob Dugger, the Managing Director of the Tutor Investment Corporation. Mr. Dugger spoke out at a conference for a greater public contribution, stating that the resulting improvement in business and social climates would benefit everyone. He stated, "We are condemning ourselves to a future of slow economic growth and high crime by not attending to what has been well-known. There are huge fiscal implications to not having enough ready-for-school children. The spending priorities of this country need to take the life success of every child the highest priority."
Charlie Hearn, Hampton, Georgia. I would just like to say that I would, you know, I didn't come here to plan on saying anything, but listening to all these other people talking about the different programs and stuff, I would like to say that I wish there was some kind of a program that we had in the county that our parents need to step up to the plate and help with some of this early education stuff, because my daughter is a schoolteacher, my wife is a parapro, and there is no participation with the parents in helping their children when they get to kindergarten. A lot of them, like you said, don't know how to read, a lot of them don't know how to do anything, and, you know, I don't know if there's a program out there, but, you know, I would like to see a lot more participation with our parents, and our parents stepping up to the plate and being somewhat responsible for helping get their children ready for school, and not everybody depend on a program, a social program, or another group of people out there to do it for them. Thank you.
My name is Marty Meeks, and I live in the city of Hampton, and I just had a few short thoughts I'd like to share. I don't represent a group, but I realize these are all very worthy causes that are being brought forth tonight and shared with everybody, and it's going to be a hard decision for whoever has to make it. We got decisions on housing, physical needs, early education, that's going to be tough. It really is. If you asked seniors, older people, they would probably forego having any type of benefit just to meet those needs. That's the kind of people we have here in this county and in our cities and towns. A senior youth activity center in Hampton would meet many needs in that area and could address some of these needs that have been mentioned here tonight, and I would really appreciate some consideration being given to meeting that need. Thank you.
My name is Jordan Tanner. I live in the Hampton community, and I'm on the Council on Aging for the Henry County, representing District Two, and I would like to also request a senior center for our seniors in Hampton. I know it's been a long time coming, but I just think that we should have in benefit like the other four, other cities here. We have to travel a long way to go to other senior centers, and the people that I have talked to, they want one in Hampton, and I just would like to say that we would like to have one, and appreciate anything you could do for us. Thank you.
No. Just in closing, I just want to, again, thank everybody, thank all the folks who attended both stakeholder meetings as well as the public hearing today. As was stated a little bit earlier, we have our work cut out for us, and we're going to take all this good information back and try to provide a draft copy for public display in the next month or so, and on May 1st, there'll be a draft document for people to review between May 1st and June 1st. We would ask that you review. Did you want to speak as well, Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I'm Lee Stewart. I'm here at a couple of things. I won't turn my hat a couple of ways. One, I'm here as the mayor of Stockbridge. Two, I'm here as a senior citizen. I'm way past, I'm up there with y'all. I have grandkids here and stuff as well. I listen to all this on here, and I listen to a lot of the citizens out here, and I just, the challenge to y'all is that there is, we've got to think out of the box a little bit on how we do some of these things. I'm all for senior centers. I'm all for the hands of hope. If you ever go over there, they make you cry when you go in there. I mean, you feel so bad when you leave. Everything that I heard listed, these are very worthy causes, but we've got to use economy of force now, as I call it. And I will tell you, for example, I'm all for a senior center, but I'm also for the youth being there. I'm the best Dr. Seuss reader in Henry County. I challenge any of y'all. I go to the schools, and I can get down and get on it with them kids and Dr. Seuss. They need us, and I need them as well. The youth help me, you know, so I don't feel, overthink some of my aches and pains and stuff as well, and that's what I think we have, and some of that we can do in economy of force on a lot of these. If we put all of our resources into one, look how many we're going to neglect, and a lot of these, if you think you do a good study down on it, it might only take, and I don't even have the figures, but some of these, how we can, what's the most we can get with this $850,000 wisely, and look at, and realize we're going to have to adjust each year, but they're all, I mean, there's not one. You guys got a tough job to turn around and decide which ones are theirs, but I just ask you, again, speaking from every, I have everybody, this has been a hot topic, as we've turned, well, no, throughout the county, and step, my phone never quits ringing over this thing on it here, and I keep pointing the fingers up to y'all on it there, the county's going to make that decision, but you need to make your voices known, and they all, they all are here. I see Hampton, how many y'all got now in Hampton, Andy?
How many people?
Yeah.
Seven thousand.
So, you got 7,000. I got 26,000 up there, okay? I told them to stay home, I'll come down tonight and speak. And he, and they stole about, they stole my brewery. And they took one of the best things we had in Stockbridge, our brewery over there. Now, they got the Jailhouse Brewery over there. But I appreciate y'all's time and support and understanding of it there, and just keep an open mind when you figure out how you're going to turn around and do it. God bless you.
Is there anyone else like to add their comments? Just quick, one thing I did want to make sure, clarify, make sure everyone's clear on, you know, again, the allocation and entitlement funding, this is now an annual funding amount. You know, again, right now, the, as noted by our consultant, the funding amount is 850,000. That amount could adjust over the course of time, certainly, but that's what the annual allocation would be. So, right now, and Bill can talk a little bit more about the next steps in the process as far as gathering that information and identifying all the priorities that the community has, all the needs that the community has, and start assessing all of them. Obviously, tonight, as noted, you know, all critically important elements that have been noted this evening and that we've heard throughout the course of this week at some of the stakeholder meetings, so just want to make sure we're clear on that. And Bill, if you could just kind of go back to the next steps again and make sure everyone's clear on what happens. The next steps is we're going to go back and try to draft, as Michael has said, a review of the demographic situation, as well as the needs that were brought up throughout our stakeholder meetings, throughout this public hearing process, and try to lay out all those in front of everybody. Just to clarify, it is not our job sitting here to make the decision. That's a local decision that has to be made by the staff, by the elected officials, by you all. We help lay out what those needs are, and we lay out what we've heard, but the, the job of assigning high, medium, or low priorities to each of the things that was mentioned is a local decision, and so I think we're all in this together, and I think we really need your input. Another couple important dates, just to keep on everyone's calendar, and so everyone's clear. May 1st, a document, draft document of the 2012 Annual Plan, as well as the five-year Consolidated Plan, will go on what we call a public display. It'll be available for the general public, for anyone who wants to review the document. It'll be, I believe, on the county website, it'll be in each of the cities, it'll be in other areas of the county if yet to be determined, but it'll be over, around, so that, we would ask that everyone take a chance during that 30-day period between May 1st and June 1st to review the document and provide comments back to us. At that point, we then would, after we get all the comments back, and after the 30-day plan expires, between June 1st and June 15th, the commissioners will have to adopt the Consolidated Plan, both five-year and annual plan, sign off on it. Now, there's a bunch of certifications that have to be signed off on by the commissioners, and then we'll submit that document to HUD for review, and ultimately, hopefully, approval sometime in July or August. At that point, the cities, I'm sorry, the counties, 2012 program year will start, and again, this is an annual allocation. Everyone should keep that in mind. This process will start over probably next January or February for the 2013 program year, and we'll, you know, county will be undertaking a very similar type process, not with stakeholders, but with public hearings as well, needs hearings. So, with that said, if there's no other thing you need to say, Michael, I think we can. No, again, if there's no other comments we would like to make, again, we'd like to thank you again for coming out this evening. Brad, you want to, some last comments?
I'd just like to make one comment. Listen to the needs, and when the report comes out, and you hear all the needs and the stakeholders that were interviewed, consider one thing, and that is, most of these organizations do have fundraisers. If you drive anywhere around the county at any point, any day, you're going to find most of them are now having 5K races or walks, five bucks, 10 bucks, 20 bucks, whatever these races cost, even if you just want to go out and have a fun walk, whatever it is, it's that $10 and $20 that these organizations are putting together to help support them. In the meantime, some organizations have been up here speaking already, there's many, many others in this county, and anything you can do to actually help these organizations in the meantime with their fundraisers, they would greatly appreciate it. It's our community, what you do and how much you can contribute, as little as it may be, as we all know, pennies add up to dimes and dollars, and it keeps going from there. So, these organizations need this community's support, and if you could, at least, please, again, pass that along when you see a fundraiser, participate, get your friends to participate, find one or two of them a year that you really want to back and put something into it, whether it's $5 a year money, or get your neighbors to put their $5 in. So, let's take care of our community, and that's one way you can help. So, let's do what we can to help these organizations with what little bit we can that we, from our own monies. Thank you.
And with that, I believe we stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all again for coming. Thank you.